Thank you colleagues, please be seated. Well, good evening colleagues. Welcome to this meeting of the Borough Council. The meeting is being recorded and livestreamed. So, welcome to those members of the public in the Public Gallery and those watching from home. If any member of the public or press would like to record proceedings themselves, please do so from the Public Gallery, without interfering with the business of today's meeting. If the fire alarm sounds, can those sitting in the Public Gallery exit through the doors behind them? And those sitting in the council chamber, please leave the room by the doors behind me and make your way to the front of the town hall. To limit disturbances, please ensure mobile phones and other electronic devices are switched off or are on silent during the meeting. Any member who wishes to speak on any of the agenda items should use the microphones available. Colleagues, I confirm that you, well, we were going to try and allow everyone to stay seated because of the microphones, but we are going to try and see if we can manage with the microphones as they are and stand, please, if you can. Pardon, John? If I can explain to you that we have, our facilities officer has looked at this. We've tried to see if there was any microphones that would fit so that people can stand and still be heard. And unfortunately for the system that we have, it is just not possible and to replace the system would be astronomical. So I think we're just going to have to try and manage as we always have. Yep. Well, we'll see how we go. The first item of business is declarations of interest. Does any member wish to make a declaration before we move on to the next item of business? For council today will deal only with business that is set out in the summons. Yes, yes. I have received apologies from councillor Lamont. Are any members aware of any further apologies?
Madam May? Madam May? Sorry. Yes, councillor Catherine Maxwell, councillor Shane Smith, as you see councillor Andrea Lamont, councillor Alison Strake and councillor G Potts.
Thank you. Any more?
Madam May can I put apologies in for councillor Glen Thompson?
Thank you.
Yes, councillor Yeh and councillor Guy.
Thank you. This isn't working. Thank you.
Why don't you just tell anybody, you just take a minute, madam May, and you take your time.
Yeah. Right. The first item, that's better. The first item of business is declarations of interest. Does any member wish to make a declaration before we move on to the next item of business? Colleagues, we'll start at this side of the work round.
Thank you, madam May. I would like to declare my personal interest in motion to someone who would stand again financially if the campaign that the motion references were to succeed. As my interest is not a disclosable pecuniary interest and is a personal interest only, I can remain in the meeting to participate in the discussion and in any vote. Thank you.
I'd like to declare exactly the same interest, just to save time.
Yes, thank you, madam May. I would like to again declare a personal interest, which is the same as my colleagues. Thank you.
I would also like to declare an interest, same as my colleagues.
Personal interest in the second motion. Again, I've got no disclosable pecuniary interest, but it's quite a personal interest. Thanks.
Madam May, likewise, I have a personal interest in motion two as a former recipient of the winter fuel allowance.
Madam May, I have a personal interest to declare on item five as a director of South Tyneside Homes. It's not a pecuniary interest and therefore I can stay in the debate and vote if I need to. Thank you.
Just same as colleagues, I've got a motion to the, having previously had the fuel poverty allowance, but I've got no pecuniary.
I'd like to declare, as my colleagues have, thank you, May.
Madam May, I would like to disclose a personal interest as well in motion two.
Thank you, madam May. I also have a personal interest in motion two. Thank you.
Madam May, ditto.
Madam May, I also would like to declare a personal interest in motion two. Thank you.
I have a personal interest in motion one this evening in that I'm a member of Unite, one of the trade unions pursuing a pay award on behalf of its members. As I do not have a disclosable pecuniary interest, I'm able to remain in the meeting for the item and take part in the debate and vote on it.
Thank you, madam May.
Thank you, madam May. Like my colleagues, I also have an interest in Unite and two.
Okay. Motion one for me as a local government employee, declaring a personal interest. Thank you.
Thank you, madam May. I also have a personal interest in motion two of tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, madam May. Ditto, as the same as all my other colleagues. Well, madam May, I would also like to declare my disclaimers as well. Pecuniary interests as director and chairman of South Tyneside Homes Board in respect of item four. The updated council constitution with regards to the transfer of housing services from South Tyneside Homes to the council have been granted a dispensation by standards committee on the 20th of March 2022, which allows me to stay in this meeting of the council, participate in the discussions and participate in any vote taken under that, except of course, recommendation forty-four, item one, which I will not speak on or partake in any vote and I will be leaving the chamber. Thank you, madam May.
I too, madam May, would like to declare a pecuniary interest, but because it's about money and it would be an advantage to me, I would leave the room.
Right, thank you, madam May. Obviously, we wouldn't like any councillors, opposition or main party committing a criminal offence, right? So a pecuniary interest, any councillor, anywhere in this chamber that's got a possibility of financially gaining in relation to the winter fuel payment, it's a pecuniary interest and what our own constitution and the localism act says, they must declare it and leave the room for that part of the meeting. I think the Montlovers will confirm that. They cannot sit in here if they've got a chance of benefiting from it. Thank you.
Elected members, I think I provided advice to you all that set out the fact that it's actually not in payment, so it's therefore not a disclosable pecuniary interest yet. Obviously, it is for all of you to make your own decisions about your interests, but something that isn't in payment isn't a disclosable pecuniary interest yet and therefore it's a personal interest for something that may happen in the future.
On the monitoring advice that we were given, I declare an interest on motion two.
Thank you. Councillor Brown? You? Any further declarations of interest? No? Right, we shall move on. The next item of business is the minutes of the meeting of the council held on the 5th of September. Are they accepted as a correct record? Councillor Robertson, can I remind you that the minutes are purely, purely a record, unless it's an actual mistake, spelling mistake, grammatical mistake, but we cannot enter into any further debate about it. Right. No, sorry. Is it inaccurate? Is it an inaccuracy? Right, if it's a, can you tell us exactly what the inaccuracy is?
Thank you. So it states in the minutes, at page thirteen, councillor Robertson suggested that only the Constitutional Committee had the powers to refer and recommend. Councillor Robertson suggested, that's what it says, that's inaccurate. What I've done was, I quoted page 191 of the constitution, right? I didn't suggest, I read out, a working party will not have any powers but will make recommendations and reports to the committee that appointed it. I didn't suggest, madam May.
Right.
I quoted our Bible.
So councillor Robertson, what you're saying is you want that one word changing?
I want suggested taken out and put in councillor Robertson provided evidence from the constitution, which is what I've done on camera. Please.
We can, we can change the suggest to said.
Provided evidence.
Well, we'll change the word, we'll change the wording so that it isn't suggested, it's said, right?
Can I raise point of order? Touch of the minute. Madam May, when John, I think it's important.
What is the ruling?
That inaccurate procedure, I think it's important that everybody in the chamber and the gallery and those watching at home know that what John stated about the inaccuracy of the working party and that the scrutiny committee I've never met was completely right. John was right, he does his homework, he knows what he's talking about. And in a recent meeting with the leader, councillor Dixon, she readily admitted that John had been wronged at that meeting, but it wasn't told to you until you left the room. I just, I think it's important that everybody knows.
Yes, well, thank you councillor, but this is purely on the accuracy of the minutes, not the spirit of the minutes and as, is, can we agree? That the minutes are a threat. With that one word that is changed. Yes, we've, councillor? Councillor? We have said that we will change that one word so that it reflects that you did not suggest you said, you made a statement. Councillor Kennedy, is this?
It's to do with the same issue, madam May, and I'd like some clarification because as far as I'm concerned, the procedures that were followed at that meeting are incorrect.
They weren't lawful. I've spoken to some.
Well, I spoke with somebody, but you're not allowing to speak.
Councillor!
Well, it's only, it's only the Constitutional Committee that can bring that motion through and whilst we all agree that those independent persons are needed, due process hasn't been followed and it should have went back to the Constitutional Committee and it should have, only them can bring it to here. Now, I've spoken to our member who stands on that committee and he is adamant that this hasn't gone to the committee, it went to the working group. The working group were not able to bring that work forward and it shouldn't be standing that we now have committees that are visited by independent people all the way, except they should be there. Proper procedure hasn't been followed by this chamber and it needs putting right.
Madam May, can we go to a vote with regard to the minutes, please? We are going to change that word to make those minutes accurate, councillor. Thank you. Can we now agree the minutes, colleagues? Thank you. No, sorry, councillor! Councillor Robertson, we have now moved on. We have moved on from the minutes, they have been agreed by full council as an accurate reflection. Please do not speak over me! I am standing. Please show respect, councillor. The minutes have been agreed with that alteration. The debate on the minutes will go no further now. We are moving on to the next item. Please show respect. Or I'm sorry councillor Robertson, if I have to stand again, I will have to ask you to leave the council chamber and that, you know, that totally goes against my green. But I am quite prepared to do that. We cannot have our council meetings disrupted. We have a massive amount of important work to get through today. Very serious decisions that this council has to make for the people of this borough and we cannot keep backtracking over something that happened at the last meeting. You said there were one word, please councillor. No point of information.
You've just stated lately, May, that we need to move forward with some very important decisions. Can I ask you, are we going to follow due procedure this meeting or are we just going to do what we want?
We never ever do just what we want. Councillor, I am, please, I am standing. The debate is finished on the minutes. We will now move on. Thank you. No. No point of information, sorry.
Move progress, madam May?
Councillor Robertson?
Madam May, it's been suggested in progress.
Madam May? Madam May? Can I make a point of order, please?
Yes, you can, councillor.
Under the constitution, thirty-four point two, I'm asking that this member, councillor Robertson, no longer be heard on this issue. And somebody can second that. Somebody can second that.
Do we have a second? Thank you. Councillor Robertson? Right, I am being informed that that has to now be put to the vote. Can I ask our council that this member no longer be heard on this one issue? Do we have agreement?
Not agreed, not agreed.
We can conduct a vote with a show of hands. So who? Five members? Thank you. Robertson is not further heard on the item of the minutes. Excuse me, I'll have to conduct the vote that you've just asked for. Councillor Barclay? Councillor Barclay? You're for, you're against, or you're abstaining? Clarify that we are, what we are actually voting for now. We're voting that councillor Robertson not be further heard on the item of the minutes. Councillor Brennan?
Against.
Councillor Brown? Councillor Carter?
For.
Councillor Clare?
For.
Councillor Coombs?
Against.
Councillor Curtis?
For.
Councillor Davies?
Abstain.
Councillor Dawes? Councillor Paden? Councillor Esteen?
For.
Councillor Dixon? Councillor Ellison? Councillor Foggan? Councillor Ford?
For.
Councillor Forman? Councillor Francis?
For.
Councillor Gibson? Councillor Jen?
For.
Councillor Hamilton?
Against.
Councillor Herbert? Councillor Keegan? Councillor Kennedy? Councillor Kilgawa? Councillor Lisk? Councillor N Maxwell? Councillor McCabe?
For.
Councillor McHugh? Councillor McKeown?
Abstain.
Councillor Melling?
For.
Councillor Myers?
Against.
Councillor Owens Palmer? Councillor Porthouse? Councillor Proudlock? Councillor K Roberts? Councillor T Roberts? Councillor Robertson? Okay. Councillor Stonehouse? Councillor J Taylor? Councillor R Taylor?
Against.
Councillor Traynor? Councillor Welsh? Councillor Wood? Councillor Roberts?
So, madam May, is not to be further heard on this issue with a number of twenty-eight votes for, twelve against and three abstentions.
Right.
Twenty-eight for.
Twenty-eight for. So councillor Roberts, the voting is that you are no longer heard on this subject, on this item, twenty-eight for, twelve against and three abstentions. So, so, so please. We will now, colleagues, we will now move on. The next item of business is Mayor's announcements and communications. Colleagues, the council has recently received national praise and success for the Viking Energy Network in Jaro and it gives me great pleasure to invite councillor Gibson, lead member for neighbourhoods and climate change, and Stuart Wright, director of place strategy, to explain these awards and present them. and present them to us. Councillor Gibson.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. It's a privilege and honour to actually receive this these awards. As you know, it's the first of its kind Viking Energy Centre, harnessing energy from the tine, it's actually taking it from the water. It's a flagship. It's actually delivering low cost energy to a number of council buildings in Jarro. And it will be extended in the near future. As you know, fuel poverty is quite high now. And these energy centres are the things of the future. As the Labour Government spoke about, you know, energy for the community, council's own flagship energy delivery. And this is what this is about. People come from all of the country to have a look at the Viking Energy Centre, at its futuristic technology. Beginning of the month, we actually got recognised by APSI for the Absolutely Excellence Award, the best in its category. And it was the flagship. It came at the top of the tree and we actually received the award which we've got. And then we went to the Royal Institute of our checks, which is the Rickshaw Awards, which is a royal institute. But it's recognised nationally, so on a national scale, South Tyneside is recognised. But not just that, people are talking about it around the country. Even UK one hundred talk about Viking Energy Centre. This is futuristic and we have delivered it by declaring the climate emergency in two thousand and nineteen. We're the only council to have delivered three climate emergency, climate emergency, economic, sorry, ecological emergency and also ocean recovery. And we're at the front of that as well. So it gives me great pleasure for this award to come to South Tyneside tonight. And and I would like before we go any further, we always miss people out. And we've got a lot of great, fantastic officers who work a lot of hours. And there's a lot of thought goes into this. And we'll have some excellent people working in South Tyneside. And those who are listening tonight, I would like to thank them. But also elected members are involved. You know, you've got different climate working groups, you've got scrutiny groups who bring things forward. It's absolutely brilliant. This is a partnership. It's a partnership with South Tyneside. And it gives me great pleasure for this award to come forward tonight, Madam Mayor.
Colleagues, I am personally looking forward to the official opening and plaque unveiling of the Paul Younger Energy Centre in Hebbin tomorrow. The Hebbin Renewable Energy Project was completed in summer twenty twenty three. The innovative scheme uses air source heat pumps, which takes ambient heat from the air, converting this into hot water to provide low carbon heating. The heat network, which utilizes solar panels and a combined heat and power unit to power the system, cuts carbon emissions by three hundred and nineteen tonnes per year. So that is something that I'm really, really looking forward to to opening tomorrow. And again, congratulations to all of the councillors in in this in this chamber who've helped with this project and particularly our offices. I think everyone needs a real pat on their back for this one. Colleagues, Lord Cole, President of World Athletics, recently announced that the Great North Run is being honoured with a World Athletics Heritage Plaque. The plaque recognises the outstanding contribution of the Great North Run to the worldwide history and development of athletics. The leader, councillor Tracy Dixon, accepted the plaque on behalf of South Tyneside Council and in recognition of our ongoing support. And I am delighted to ask her to present it to me today so that it can prominently be displayed here at South Shields Town Hall. Councillor Dixon. It it gives me the greatest of pleasure. We are a small council and I definitely think we're five above our weight. Finally, colleagues, on a much sadder note, I would ask that you join me in a moment of silence to reflect and pay tribute to former councillor Thomas Bamford, who was mayor of South Tyneside from nineteen ninety three to nineteen ninety four, and a councillor of the Hebbin South Ward, and who sadly passed away on the eighteenth of September. So, colleagues, can I ask you to stand for a minute's silence, please? Thank you, colleagues. The next item of business is to consider a report of the Director of Governance and Corporate Affairs on the Equality, Diversity, Inclusion and Belonging Strategy. I will ask councillor Paul Dean as lead member for the voluntary sector partnerships and equalities to move the report. Councillor Dean.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Colleagues, I'm very proud to be sharing our new South Tyneside Equality, Diversity, Inclusion and Belonging Strategy with you all today. It's very timely that we have reviewed our approach over recent months. The violence and unrest across the country over the summer shocked us all. There is no place for prejudice or hate in South Tyneside. We've been working really closely with residents, employees, schools and businesses to help ensure they feel safe and supported. As a community and as a council, we are better for the contributions of our friends, colleagues and neighbours from different backgrounds who bring different insights, talents or ways of working than our own. From the Irish immigrants who helped make us a shipbuilding centre during the Industrial Revolution, to the Yemeni Muslim sailors who settled here after World War One, the Indian and Bangladeshi families who first opened restaurants on Ocean Road in the nineteen fifties, to the Japanese businessmen who created thousands of jobs by opening the Nissan factory here in the nineteen eighties. South Tyneside has always been a place that has thrived when we've welcomed newcomers and embraced different cultures. And events like our colourful and inclusive annual summer parade, one of my favourite events of the year, are a powerful reminder of how we all benefit from people of all ages, cultures, abilities, interests and more, sharing their passions and talents. As a public body, we have a legal duty under the Equality Act to support and protect employees and service users from discrimination because of the characteristics such as age, sex, disability, race or religion. But more than that, we also have a moral duty to challenge prejudice and inequality and make sure everybody in our community has the support they need to thrive. We have already set out targeting support to make things fairer as one of our five long term ambitions for South Tyneside. And we have ensured that respect is is in our council proud values. Building on this, our new ADIB strategy is our commitment to promoting equality, supporting inclusion and making sure every member of this community knows that they belong here, whatever their race, religion, gender, sexuality, disability or any other characteristic. We know that it's not enough just to say that the ADIB matters to us. Being a welcome and inclusive place requires ongoing reflection and decisive action. This new strategy and all of the projects set out in the action plans within will help us ensure we have the right foundations in place. Projects like our new equalities information report, our data observatory and our work to collect better employee information will help us make sure that we have a proper understanding of the diverse communities we represent and therefore be able to support them better. Efforts like our diverse monitoring, monitoring, sorry, search scheme and our planned ADIB engagement partnerships summit help us to go further in our commitment to meaningfully listening to people with different perspectives. More training for our employees and elected members and a brand new equality impact assessment process will help us ensure that those designing and delivering services have the tools, skills and confidence they need to effectively spot and tackle inequalities. While there will always be more to do, we hope this strategy will help coordinate and drive some positive activities and will make things fairer in our communities. I'd like to thank everybody who has had a role in shaping, including employees from many services, representatives of our excellent ADIB employee networks, fellow elected members and partners and community leaders from across South Tyneside. Colleagues, I'd invite you to proudly endorse this new strategy. Thank you all.
Thank you, councillor. Is that seconded?
Seconded, Madam Mayor. I reserve the right to speak later.
Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Ford.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you councillor Dean. It is a really welcome report, both the strategy and the information report. I think, as you've highlighted, particularly given what has happened this summer around the country, it is really important. This, this is everyone's responsibility, all of us, elected members, as well as staff and all the the work we do with voluntary sector partnerships and in our day to day with work with our residents. I think it's really important that, yes, we have a public sector equality duty. It's really important that we have the process of identifying objectives. And they're really welcome as and the strategy is, especially the actions that are set out. One thing I wanted to really commend and draw attention to is that as well as the nine characteristics that are specifically protected in the Equality Act of two thousand and ten, the council will also and is treating characteristics of care experience, armed forces, service and poverty and financial insecurity with the same consideration. That is really important for all of us and something I feel very passionately about. I think the the range of work that we have done is very commendable and important, but we really have to do even more. And I think in the the objectives, so the action plans, the one of the key things that now I've lost my, I've lost my highlighted bits, that in in objective two, I think that one of the key things that I think will really assist, I can't cannot find, sorry, apologies, section B, there we go, it is there. Some really excellent objectives there, action plan, actions, but that, no, it's gone. The, sorry, where my printer printed out was not helpful. B six, here we go, to develop a people's panel made up of diverse local voices who can be called on to share thoughts and insights on new policies and plans. And that is starting from this autumn. That's really welcome, as is the pressing forward with the delivery of a Poverty Truth Commission, ongoing but particularly aiming for next summer. I understand if that could be confirmed, that is really important. And seeing that it's working, our council anti-poverty coordinator, working with WIST and Inspire South Tyneside, I think those are really important partnerships for the future. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I I fully support South Tyneside Council with regards to equality, diversity and inclusion. And I very, and I very much look forward to the day when this chamber reflects the racial diversity of South Tyneside. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. I also welcome and endorse this report. I do, however, find slight challenge a little bit in some of the granular, small percentages set out in this report around the diversity of our members. It presents at a point perhaps where we are getting to a point where people are personally identifiable in roles that they may not wish to have that known. And I realise this has gone through a significant process, but I think if we can consider at what level we consider appropriate to report at, this is perhaps a little on the small side.
Thank you.
Thank you for that report, councillor Dean. I appreciate the work that's gone into this. It sounds like an excellent way forward for South Tyneside and I thoroughly approve of the the aims and objectives you've got and I can only commend you on that. One thing I'd just like to particularly applaud you for is the, it's C eleven, the action to develop and roll out a reverse mentoring programme. I think that there are a lot of people who live in South Tyneside who never feel heard and to actually actively invite them to be part of this can only be a good way forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the report, for all officers' work and everything as well. I wanted to speak as like from a personal viewpoint because my oldest child, who's twenty two now, is trans and so was my daughter and is now my son. And I'm so proud of them for doing that. And I see things from a different perspective. So I just wanted to stand up and say thank you for all the work. I think it's brilliant that the council have done all this and I would love to be involved further, going ahead and like stirring hoops and things, stirring hoops and things like that, you know? Because I think it's it's just such an important thing for it to get in doing that. And so thank you for the work.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the report and well done. After five years as a councillor now, it states in here at page twenty six, under the public sector equality duty set out in the Equality Act two thousand and ten, all public bodies, including councils, are required to consider the needs of people with protected characteristics, including age, disability, gender reassignment, marriage, civil partnership, pregnancy, maternity, race, religion or belief, sex, sexual orientation and contribute to the three aims of the act. Now, in my five years, each of them that I've just listed there, I've had people, residents in my ward, in my old ward and across South Tyneside where we've had help off the council, but the council's failed on other things. Yeah, so we definitely had the help, but we're kind of just pay lip service when there's genuine people needing help and the council's trying to do it. And members, officers take umbrage when you're trying to put something across on behalf of someone who's vulnerable. So great, but it's got to be right through. Okay, thank you. Madam Mayor, it has to be said that this morning, we had a conference here from adversity to diversity. It was excellent. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and thank you councillor Dean. I really want to acknowledge the work that has gone in in the last two years on behalf of the council and its staff to ensure that we are complying with our statutory requirements but going beyond our statutory requirements and I feel very proud as a councillor of this council that we have made such progress and continue to do so because it is always an ongoing path that we travel down. Thank you very much, Madam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For me, this report is about leadership to a certain extent and I would like to support the report. Forty years of professional experience working on equalities issues, particularly with racial groups, I have to confess that it's very difficult to change personal views, everybody's entitled to their personal view, however, what we can do and what we must do as an institution is to make sure that those personal views which are contradictory to our expression in this report are not put into practice in the workplace and in our professional lives. I think we we must make a statement therefore that in this institution, we will not tolerate any kind of discrimination and I think we must support by giving this leadership to the other institutions in government, in local government and in the police and the National Health Service, any other government institution, we must give this leadership to state very firmly that we are for equality and against discrimination. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I think everything's been said really that I was going to say and like councillor Brown, I was at the event this morning, which was absolutely fantastic and there must have been over a hundred and fifty people there, but I think it's important to say we all have a responsibility to make sure that nobody is discriminated because of any of the characteristics, but I would also like to commend the officers in putting this report together, sorry. Thank you.
The next item of business is to consider a report of the Director of Governance and Corporate Affairs to update the council constitution with regards to the transfer of housing service from South Tyneside Homes to the council. I will ask councillor Tracy Dixon as leader and chair of the Constitution Committee to move the report. Councillor Dixon?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Colleagues, this report sets out the recommended changes required to the constitution as a result of the decision made by Cabinet on the thirteenth of March 2024 that the housing services currently performed by South Tyneside Homes are brought back to the direct control of the council from the first of November 2024. This decision will allow for more effective prevention, intervention and support for our residents. Focus within the council's corporate strategy and ambitions is framed around improving opportunities for residents through effective service delivery and these aspirations can be best met through, best met, put my teeth in, best met through our integrated services. As we know, colleagues, the constitution of the council describes the way in which the council conducts its business and how it operates and how decisions are made. We need to ensure this provides for housing services and that is why these amendments are needed. We also know the importance of good effective governance and so it is essential that these changes are made in advance of the first of November. This will allow for seamless integration back into the council and with appropriate regulatory and statutory responsibilities embedded within our governance arrangements and so the council's decision-making structures and performance and assurance frameworks are updated to provide for housing. The main updates and proposals are set out clearly in the report, Madam Mayor, between paragraphs thirteen and twenty four. So colleagues, on behalf of the Constitution Committee, a politically balanced committee with representations from across the chamber, I recommend to council today that we agree the updates and ask that you approve the updated constitution and recommendations set out in paragraph forty four of the report to ensure the constitution reflects our changing circumstances and to support our approach to meet consumer standards. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Is that seconded?
Seconded, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Hamilton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just reading with interest the background information on this, where the council of Kies set out its vision for the borough, a place where people live happy, healthy and fulfilled lives and it goes on to say that the priorities are providing high quality housing across all tenures and the council remain committed to this and this was vital context as we build our strategic long term thinking for housing within South Tyneside. Myself and councillor Kennedy have been out visiting residents who had some serious problems in the housing situation they were in, it wasn't disgraceful, it was heartbreaking to see families where they have to use their sitting room as a bedroom, where they can't sit round the table to have an evening meal because they're so overcrowded, children sitting in a bedroom, all in different bedrooms, eating that evening meal. To me, a very important part of family life is everybody sits down at tea time, when children come from school or from work and you talk about your day's events and what's happened here, there's people living in South Tyneside who don't have that facility and young children who are grown up thinking that this is normal day to day living and it isn't and I just hope that when the housing comes back under council control, that this is looked at seriously because it's a serious problem that we've got with the housing situation today. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Robertson.
You have three minutes. First of all, I can't understand why we were given four hundred and sixty six pages when there's roughly about ten pages being amended. Look at the leaves of paper on here, right? Absolute disgrace, I'm not a Queen councillor, right? It should have been just the ten pages, Madam Mayor, that's an absolute disgrace, right? It really is, there's no need for that, there's been ten pages getting amended, but we've got a pocket of money. So, the other thing is all the housing come back in, obviously in 2018, twenty, we had a gentleman stand up there and say, we've got no good house, right? Things have vastly improved, more than five years I've been a councillor, it really helped from the help for the repairs etc. I see what George is selling, we're going to find the other signs and what have you, but it has vastly improved. What we're having is we've lost some good staff from South Tyneside Homes, Jason Crump getting media, you know.
We're real good lads, we've got good lads still, you know, down the lines Ian Barclay, Liam Wright, Gary Curseop, Rob Marsden, Tracy Richardson, we've got some great staff, but we're losing them on a monthly basis because we're not recognising what we've got and they're being headhunted, they're going to Gateshead, they're going to other housing associations etc. We need to stop it because we're going to end up with a council that's run by officers that don't live in the borough, don't care about the borough and drive away from the borough in the night time, yeah? So, I'm over the moon as it's coming back in, right?
Thank you.
And I hope that the staff that we've got are nurtured to keep it going good, right? Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Robertson. Councillor Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillor Robertson's just said there, I think yourself the South Tyneside Homes coming back into the council, that'd be one of the best things that ever happened to it. The only issues I've got is, I mean, we've got all this paperwork, last Friday at tea time when I got home from work and I was working Saturday and Sunday, so I haven't had a chance to go through it all, the only issues I would have there is if I could defer the constitution bit so we could have a look at it properly because to be honest with you, what's in that constitution or what's going to be slipped into the constitution, who wrote it, I'll tell you, is now, I don't know about yourselves, but I've got no faith in the people that write that constitution and change the goalposts that go around. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, councillor Roberts, that really, really is offensive to our staff.
Yep, but please. Madam Mayor, can I, can I just sort of just make a comment here? The constitution is made up of a cross-party selection of elected members. We hold these meetings, we debate in these meetings and we take advice and can I just say nothing councillor Roberts gets slipped into the constitution? You know, we do work, we do councillor, councillor Roberts, councillor Roberts, you know, I'm just trying to respond to you. We work through that and we go through it and I mean, there's members of the Constitution Committee who may want to stand up and just make a comment because there is nothing gets slipped through into this, this is a very open, transparent document. Your comment with regard to the pages, I think that's basically just for completion and there is an opportunity for members to use their laptops if they wish, but you know, I just want to make it quite clear that what we do is a constitution committee with the advice, not instruction, advice of the officers within the room is very open, transparent and there's nothing gets slipped through, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. He needs to see if it's a point of order. Is it? Right, councillor Robertson.
Talking about the constitution, so we're talking about page thirty eight now, right?
Something about what councillor Dixon's just.
What councillor Dixon said was in response to the constitution comment that councillor Roberts said, thank you. Are you prepared, thank you?
Councillor Robertson? Will you please, you have been offensive to our staff who have, who have no right of reply, you have been extremely offensive to me and I would please ask you to temper what you say about our officers, about fellow councillors, it really is not acceptable in this council chamber. I'm sorry councillor, I'm just, I'm moving on.
I've got to be able to respond. Hey, what's the point if we're not going to follow procedure? The leader spoke, can I speak in response, please?
You don't have a councillor.
Who's running this meeting?
Councillor.
I'll tell you what it is.
Madam Mayor, I do have a point of order and it actually applies to both councillors, but I'm specifically meaning this.
Explain what hers is, what we.
Yes, it's thirty four point four on page two eighty in the papers. So it refers, Madam Mayor, and it's at your discretion to call for this, that if a councillor continues their misconduct after a motion under the previous rule has been carried, the mayor will move that the councillor do leave for the remainder of the meeting and if the motion is seconded, it will be put without discussion. So that, and it follows, I don't know whether members or members of the public realise that this is, this is showboating and this is really rude and it's, and it's really disgraceful that not only members but officers, as you've said, without a right of reply are disrespected regularly in Borough Council and I for one will not tolerate that. So with your permission, I would like you to move thirty four point four, please, that is put in order and ask the member to leave because I'm not going to sit any longer and I will remain, I'm not going anywhere, but I don't think we should tolerate this.
Councillor Roberts.
Because we've got the email.
Councillor Roberts.
Yes, free information to you, yes.
The same. Councillor Roberts.
That's why I've spoken up for her.
I shall have to ask you to leave the chamber if there's any more outbursts. Please, no, councillor Robertson, we must move on.
Second, second councillor Kilgore's point of orders.
Thank you, councillor Dean.
We now have to vote, are we, a show of hands if councillor Robertson has to leave the chamber because of disruptive behaviour?
Thank you, Queen Councillors. All the sausage is about the hands up.
Thousands, isn't it?
With those that don't agree to councillor Robertson leaving the chamber, can you put your hands up now, please? Any abstentions?
Madam Mayor, can I just, point of information, please?
It's no point of information.
I just think it's wrong that based on the tensions between the two councillors involved that this has been allowed to be moved and I don't think it's right that it should be moved.
I'm sorry, you were moving on councillor Robertson. Right, so it's twenty seven. Right, so for councillor Robertson being removed from the chamber for the remainder of this meeting, it's twenty seven. Against is eleven and abstention is four. So it's a very sad situation councillor Robertson, for me to have to ask you now to remove yourself from the chamber for the remainder of the meeting.
Just two seconds, you have to suspend it, I'll just find a word and then we'll have to wait until we're done, we'll have to have a way of moving them through what you've got on.
When you. No, no, I'm sorry, you have caused sufficient disruption, we have serious matters to discuss tonight, all of us, and you have continually disrupted and been offensive and I'm sorry, the vote is and you must now please leave the chamber, please, please.
Ian Malcolm, come back, at least we're allowed to speak, man, honest to God. Come back, Ian, all forgiven.
Madam Mayor, I don't consider my role as a councillor to be part of any beauty competition, but I'm not directly allied to the three main parties, but I simply say, having supported colleagues here, to be against that judgement, I simply say let's now move progress for everybody's mental health in here because you can cut the tension with a knife and I was a mental health nurse for forty five years, so in a humble way and I wish councillor Robert- So in a humble way, and I wish Councillor Robertson a safe journey, or if he's waiting here, I genuinely do, John, but it's now time to move progress.
Thank you. Right, colleagues, we will now, we will now continue. Councillor Ford.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I did wish to continue the discussion about this important agenda item. As a member of the Constitution Committee, I was unable to attend that last meeting. However, it was correctly called and constituted. And my colleague, the Green Councillor, Sarah McCune, was able to attend and inform me afterwards what had been decided. I had all the papers. It was all correctly, the business was correctly conducted. There was advice from officers, as been stated. And I think that this is an important and welcome move, as opposition councillors have stated, to bring the South Highside Homes back into council control, which hopefully will improve the service that we provide to our residents. That is vital, that opposition councillors have referred to as well. And I think that the point of this agenda item is simply to ensure that our constitution is correct when the move placed. There is a time limit, it has a deadline, it has to be done and it has to be done correctly. And I do understand the logic, much as it pains me that there would be so many bits of paper produced. But again, like other councillors, I do not choose to have a paper copy of the red, because I can manage on a laptop, appreciate not everyone can. But I appreciate the logic of being completely transparent. And therefore, when amending the constitution in between annual Borough Councils, it is important that the full constitution is reproduced for members to see exactly where the changes have been made and exactly where nothing has been slipped in. You know, there really isn't any, you know, and I have, I have a previous constitution committees questioned wording that has been changed and tried to make sure that nothing that I do not understand or agree with is passed. And that is the job of the Constitution Committee members and to bring that to the attention of the wider Borough Council wherever appropriate, whenever it comes up. So I would move that this report is accepted by this Borough Council as a true reflection of the wish of the Constitution Committee to move this important business, to allow this move to happen correctly and that everything that flows from the move back in to council control of our housing stock and for our residents, that we move that this report is accepted. Thank you.
Anyone, Councillor Clare?
Madam Mayor, just a point of information because I certainly welcome the report. And I think what we really need to take into consideration as well is the fact that the overwhelming number of tenants welcome the report as well. It's the tenants that strive and change. And I think all the surveys that's been conducted as part of the transition to move to the council again, I think overwhelmingly, I think all the reports that were heard in community area forums throughout the borough suggested that overwhelmingly the number of tenants were in favour.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Melling?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just an administrative point, if I might suggest, if it's not too much trouble, that when we have a document of this size, it's very difficult physically to manage it. And I wondered whether the constitution and the various policies and strategies contained in this document be actually bound separately so that we get them all together and we can refer to them at this meeting, but they're not in one big document like this.
Thank you, Councillor. Anyone else, Councillor?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to all of the officers who've worked really hard to help us to make the changes to this constitution. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone? No one else? Right, colleagues. Councillors recommended to agree the recommended changes proposed to the constitution and formally adopt the council's constitution as set out in this report and Appendix One with immediate effect to ensure the constitution is updated in advance of the transfer date of housing services on the 1st of November 2024. Does counsel, and I will read them out separately so we know exactly what we are doing. A, approve and adopt the updated Part A summary and explanation. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. B, approve and adopt the updated Part B articles of the constitution, including policy framework. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. C. Oh, sorry, sent it. Can we have a show of hands? Who is for? Thank you, who?
Madam Mayor, would you like me to just clarify?
Yes, please. So elected members, just to clarify, this is B. So this is the ask that you approve and adopt the updated Part B articles of the constitution, which includes the policy framework. All those in favour of approving that? Can you show your hands? All those against, can you show your hands? Councillor Kennedy, no, was that your hand or were you on your head? Sorry, I didn't know, no hand. One, two, three. So anybody abstaining? So that's, oh, Councillor Clare.
Used to know what the basis was from certain members of the opposition to vote against. I didn't quite catch it when you actually raised the point.
Right, that's.
82 in favour.
So is this C?
No, this is for B. So we're still on B, we've just done the vote on B then.
Oh, right.
So it's in favour of four, five against and four abstentions.
Thank you. So this is item B, 32, four, five against and four abstentions. So it is approved. We'll now move on to section C. Do we approve and adopt the updated Part C responsibilities of functions, including scheme of delegations? Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. D, do we approve and adopt the updated Part D rules and procedures, specifically procurement procedure rules? Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. And Part E, finally, do we approve and adopt the updated Part F Members Allowance Scheme? Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Colleagues, Borough Council is also asked to authorise the Director of Governance and Corporate Affairs to finalise and/or progress the arrangements as approved by full council and make any further consequential changes or minor alterations arising from the decision of full council or as may be required. Is that agreed, colleagues?
Agreed.
Thank you. Right, we will now move on to item eight, and that is to consider any petitions received. We have not received any petitions under council procedure. Oh, have I missed one? I've missed a few.
Item six.
Oh, there's it, I had to be in there.
I can have it on an item six.
I have it on an item six, right. I didn't have an item six, colleagues. Item six. To, the next item of business is to consider a report of the Director of Place Strategy, which provides an update on the first homes policy statement. I will ask Councillor Jim Foreman, Lead Member for Housing and Community Safety, to move the report. Councillor Foreman.
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, this report seeks the approval of council to approve the recommendations as set out in the report. Following the review of the current statement, which was published in 2022, the report outlines changes to be adopted into the new policy. These recommended changes, following an independent viable assessment as part of the local plan evidence. First homes are an affordable owner-occupier product that allows first-time buyers to gain access to the housing market at a discounted price from the market value. These properties remain with the discount in perpetuity for future sales and are monitored via the local authority as to the eligibility of the applicant. A local connection criteria has been included in addition to cap on income, mortgage and not owning a previous home. As set out in the government guidance, first homes must be discounted by a minimum of 30% against the market value. Although local authorities can set policies that seek discounts of 40% or 50% if they can evidence the need and viability through the local plan process. The existing interim first homes policy statement says the minimum 30% discount from open market value will apply to the first homes being marketed across South Tyneside. However, evidence now suggests that a minimum 40% discount should be applied in higher-value areas such as Cleeden, Eastborden and Whitburn. This new policy gives us the opportunity to ensure that we develop a range of affordable housing whilst not at the expense of rented products, which we should still expect to see on relevant development sites. Creating and maintaining a balanced housing market to support our residents and the economy requires a range of housing options. Madam Mayor, councillors recommended to approve the changes as set out in the paper and increase the discounts applied for the higher-value areas in the borough, namely Cleeden, Eastborden and Whitburn. Madam Mayor, the recommendations are paragraphs 32, 33 and 34 in the report.
Thank you. Is that seconded? Thank you, Councillor. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Ford?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for explaining this important measure, which all of us, I'm sure, hope would help first-time homebuyers in our borough. I am concerned that the recommendation is to go for a minimum 40% discount in the areas mentioned, Cleeden, Eastborden and Whitburn, where the legislation allows up to 50%. And the paragraph about implications on page three of the report says higher levels of discount throughout South Highside will almost certainly create viability issues for developers due to lower sales income. And that then in paragraph 12, to ensure a balance in the housing market, a discount of 50% is to be discouraged as this is likely to have an impact on other affordable housing products being developed, such as social and affordable rent. I think the housing crisis that we're all aware of, I am not convinced why we should not be asking, you know, setting private developers make, applying for planning permission to develop land in particularly those high-value areas, why we would not ask them to go for a higher, set a higher target? Because in order for first-home buyers to buy in those areas, those are the areas with the highest market prices. So it makes absolute sense to me to use the legislation to put the highest level of discount in order to enable first-home buyers, people who have lived in those villages all their lives, whose children cannot afford to buy any property in that area and would have to go somewhere else. And surely we want to enable first-time buyers to buy in every part of our borough, not just in lower market value areas. You know, if we're serious about affordable housing for all, we really have to go for the higher targets, I would say. So I would like to hear more justification for why not to go for 50%.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Councillor Davies?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and thank you for moving the report, Councillor Foreman. I note between paragraphs 25 to 29, the environmental and sustainability section of the report and the council's ambitions, policy, strategies and plans, there is no attempt to think about the impact of new construction. New construction has an incredible climate impact. It is incredibly carbon intensive. And not only that, as stated with the Viking heat development, we have passed the climate emergency, we have passed the ecological emergency and we have passed the ocean recovery motions here in this place. And all three of those have an impact on housing. Whitburn developments were rejected because of the impact of the sewage going in to the North Sea. Building more homes increases their climate impact. It means we're host, but without those mitigations in place, we need to hasten our decline. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Anyone else?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Councillor Foreman, for your report. I absolutely understand and approve of the need for housing for first-time buyers to be made available at a discounted cost. We know the cost of living is hitting a lot of people, particularly the younger members of our borough residents who are suffering substantially at this present time. However, I do agree with Councillor Ford that many young people are now simply unable to buy properties where they were brought up and where they're familiar with and have family and friends to support them. And I'm also, I'm sure the members are very aware that, given that the upper, after the discount has been applied, the first sale price must be no higher than a quarter of a million pounds. It's going to be far beyond the reach of the vast majority of the residents who live here. And also for those who are fortunate enough to actually earn the upper limit, which is £80,000 per annum, I think those people perhaps do have quite a considerable choice of where they would like to live in the borough, whereas the people who are desperately in need of housing, such as those the councillor Hamilton mentioned earlier, who are never going to be in a position to buy a property, they should be addressed first.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Councillor Ford?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, with regards to the 40% for Cleeden, Whitburn and Eastborden, it went through viability testing, which was part and parcel of the government's initial idea. And that's how we come to the 40%. With regards to building homes, I'm afraid there's another one where the government give us a target to build homes and we have to adhere to that target. So it's not really the council who are in control of the amount of houses that they've built. It's the government who tell us exactly how many houses we have to build. And with regards to the cost, the £250,000, that's another thing, which the government have laid down guidelines to the minimum and maximum. And that's what it is. Once again, it is not the council who are in control of these things. It is the government. And I'll kind of wait to see what happens on October 30th because it might be a good thing. a good thing. You might, it might go up or the percentages might go up, or it might be a bad thing, but it'd be an interesting experience on October the thirtieth. So when we talk, please address the government and not the council.
Point of information.
Councillor Francis?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. It's just a point of information on what was just said. The council, you're absolutely hundred percent correct. The council is not responsible for the top down housing targets. But the council is responsible for this report. And I think the point that was being raised is that there's an omission in the report because there definitely is an environmental impact of new builds and that should be acknowledged in the report, which the council is responsible for.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Mayor, mine was just a point of information, actually, just very, just following on from councillor Davies. There has been no house building stopped in Whitburn because of sewage. There was a planning application that went through. There was concerns raised. There was a letter sent to the Secretary of State. A response has been sent back to the council. So I just wanted just to clarify, there's been nothing stopped. It is in process and it is in the system, just to make that quite clear, Madam Mayor. There's been nothing stopped, but there is concerns raised. I totally understand with regard to sewage, councillor Davies.
Thank you councillor. Colleagues, councillor asked to adopt the amended interim interim first homes policy statement outlined in this report and authorize the publication of an amended interim first homes policy statement at appendix one. Is that agreed? Is a dissenting voice, we will take a vote. Yes, please.
Would just do a show of hands, elected members, all those in favour of adopting the policy and publishing it online? Can you show your hands? All those against? Can you show your hands, please? Any abstentions?
So that's approved, Madam Mayor, on the basis of thirty four, four, six against and one abstention.
Thank you. So that is approved, thirty four, four, six against and one abstention. The second part is the council is asked that the proposed changes highlighted in yellow that a minimum forty percent discount should be applied in higher value areas. Is that agreed? Agreed? Thank you. Thank you, colleagues. We'll now move on to item seven. The next business is to receive questions under procedure rule eight. We have received no questions for council under procedure rule eight for our meeting today. The next item of business is to deal with petitions received under council procedure rule nine. We have not received any petitions under council procedure rule nine for our meeting today. In accordance with council procedure rule nine, I wish to update you in respect of a petition presented to council on the twenty fifth of July, twenty twenty four. This petition to save the green belt land, South Felgate housing development was addressed within the report on the local plan, which was presented to council on the fifth of September, twenty twenty four. In view of the fact that the submission of the local plan to the Secretary of State was not approved by council on fifth of September, there is nothing further to respond to with regard to the petition. So thank you, colleagues, for that. Yes councillor? It's not really quite a good model.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to raise awareness for everyone that even though it's temporarily shelved and everything, this, the green belt and everything for the residents, obviously over twenty two hundred people signed the petition and that to save it. And it might still come back to table. So I think we all need to be aware that it's not definitely not going to happen and we need to like be mindful that this does need to be protected. Our future generations want to, you know, let people be aware that it could still happen and just yeah, be very mindful because we do need to protect that green belt. Thank you.
Question has been fully advised as to what may maybe happen in the future. The next item of business is to receive motions under council procedure rule ten. There are three motions to be considered under rule ten today. I will ask the proposer of the motion to move the motion and they may speak for up to five minutes. I will then ask whether the motion is seconded. The second may speak for up to three minutes or reserve the right to speak later in the debate. The motion will then be open to debate by members who may each speak for up to three minutes and may move amendments. Any amendments must be relevant to the motion and only one amendment will be moved and discussed at any one time. If an amendment is carried, the motion as amended takes the place of the original motion and becomes the substantive motion to which any further amendments are moved. Motion one has been submitted by councillors Frances, Curtis, Herbert, Ford, Davies, McCune, Jean, Stonehouse, R Taylor, Guy and Yeare. Councillor Francis, please present your motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This motion calls for an end to local government austerity and for proper investment in our public services. Over the past decade, austerity measures and cuts to funding have drained the lifeblood of our communities. Our council's budgets have been slashed in half and too often the most vulnerable are paying the price. Austerity isn't just a word and these aren't just numbers on a spreadsheet. It means cuts all across council services. It means a tragic rise in excess debts. Three hundred and thirty five thousand people who are no longer with us because we failed to protect them. And it means a fall in UK life expectancy. And it means adult social care, a service that takes up up to seventy five percent of council budgets is hanging on by a thread. I'm sure many of us were shocked to learn that our council is facing a seven point seven million hole in the budget. Now, I gather we've taken drastic measures to plug that gap, but how long can we keep stretching our resources to breaking point? Six councils have already declared bankruptcy. We can't allow South Tyneside to be next. It doesn't have to be this way. We don't have to balance the books on the backs of those who most need our help. Over the last decade, I've heard Labour colleagues fiercely attack austerity and highlight the negative impact on the lives of our communities. And they were right to do so. Austerity was a political choice under the last government and it remains a political choice now. It's time to end this crisis. We must demand that the government reverses these cuts and invests in our future. The government can't expect councils to keep doing more and more with less and less. Our budgets are breaking and so are our communities. We must demand more. I urge you to support this motion.
Thank you councillor. Is the motion seconded?
Seconded.
Thank you. The motion is now open to debate by members. Do any members wish to ask a question? Speak on the motion or move an amendment. Councillor Davies?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, speaking in support of this motion. We're here today on the precipice of a budget as already mentioned in this meeting in two weeks' time. The future of our public services and lives of those who rely on them are at stake. But we're talking about fairness and dignity and our collective responsibility to ensure that those who serve our communities are treated with the respect that they deserve. As councillor Francis has said, more than a decade of cuts to local government, we have borne the brunt of austerity. Workers have borne the brunt of that too. Their pay has been slashed by more than twenty five percent. And that any pay rise has been wiped away in the cost of living crisis. There are care staff, social workers, teaching assistants and binmen. Vital services for all South Tyneside residents. They do more and more with less and less while their wages stagnate and their living costs spiral. Real democracy is about listening to those whose voices are too often ignored. And yesterday closed a ballot between Unison, G M B and Unite asking for a pay award in the region of three thousand pounds extra or ten percent. It's an attempt to recover what has been lost after years of cuts. It is about fairness and respect. When we fail to pay our staff fairly, we lose them, as already heard in this meeting. We're seeing people leave for better paid jobs in different sectors, move outside of the borough. It is unsustainable and we need to act to restore that. We have this hole of seven point seven million in our budget. And if, say, we were to receive a pay award of five point five percent, that would put another three million pounds approximately onto this budget's strain for this year alone. If the pay award was approved at ten percent, we're looking nearer to thirteen million pounds worth of gap in our funding for this year. Evermore councils pushed into section one one four notices. But it is central government that fails us, cutting our funding year after year while expecting us to keep our services going. We cannot bear this burden alone. It's the government's responsibility to fund public services and they must stop forcing local councils into impossible choices between paying our staff fairly and maintaining essential services. I welcome the move from the new Labour government for multi-year funding settlements. It's providing stability and certainty. But we must call for investment in local government that allows for us to plan for the future as this motion does. It's bold transformative action that's at stake here as well as a pay rise. I urge you to support this motion unamended. It's not just a notion of solidarity, it's about workers. It's about standing for justice, for sustainability and for a kind of society we want to build where everyone is valued and no one is left behind.
Thank you councillor. Anyone wish to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move the amendment as set out that people have got a copy of. First of all, I would like to thank councillor Francis for bringing this motion and highlighting the difficult times that we've had as a council. And I think it's fair to say we'd all like to see an end to austerity and investment in our local public services. However, we think that our amendment aims not to detract from what you're saying, but to strengthen it. The government is making difficult decisions needed to deliver economic stability due to the twenty two billion black hole in its budget left by the Conservative government. But let's not forget the financial mess left by the forty nine days of Liz Truss's premiership. We as a council are facing many difficult financial decisions as well as increased demand for key services, as it says in the motion, for example, adult social care. Therefore, we are calling on the government to ensure that local government and public services receive appropriate substantial investment. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Is the amendment seconded? Thank you. You wish to speak? I'll reserve your right. Yes. Thank you. So we now take.
So do any other members wish to speak on the amendment?
Right.
I don't know why you haven't got the right papers. So does anybody want to speak? Councillor Curtis?
So does any member wish to 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 ask a question or speak on the amendment? Councillor?
So I'm just going to sit down and cover it very well. Yeah, I've got a question for councillor Carter. I noticed that they've removed the explicit request to increase government funding, local government funding. And I just wanted to kind of understand why. Well, instead of asking for it to be adequately funded, over the last however many years, we've seen government funding reduced and reduced, reduced, local government funding. And each year it's deemed adequate. So an ask for it to be adequately funded is essentially an ask for maybe we get the same amount, maybe we get a reduced amount, maybe we get more. Why would we not be explicit about the fact that we need more, we want more? It doesn't make sense to kind of remove that for me. Like surely we should be upfront about what we want rather than just assuming they can telepathically interpret our request. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Francis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm just going to go through some of the bits of the amendment. And forgive me for saying so, but you don't need an expensive pair of glasses to see what a terrible situation local government is in. But to to pick up the points in the amendment, it's seeking to add in the fact that the government grants to local authorities have been cut by the Conservative government. And you're absolutely right to put the blame where it lies. But I would argue that the responsibility to right that historic wrong now lies with our current Labour government. Over the page, it's seeking to remove a couple of things, seeking to remove the line, the new government elected in July, twenty twenty four has not yet committed to increasing funding for local authorities. And it's also seeking to remove the line, cuts to government grants provided to local authorities must be reversed by the new government in order to sufficiently fund growing demand for key services such as adult social care. And I would simply say that removing those two lines does not make either of those things any less true. So let's not be in denial here about the reality of the situation. I'm really pleased to see that the line that's been left in is this will include a call for a sustained uplift to local authority funding to cover shortfalls in adult social care, education and other key services. And I'm glad that's left in, but it's not just adult social care, education and other key services. We're talking about all aspects of council spending, our parks and playgrounds, children's services, public health, keeping the streets clean, highways, libraries, community centres, all of the things that our communities have seen damaged by austerity. And I think that that really needs to be said. I personally think that although you say, you know, the the black hole in the in the national budget, I would simply say that we are one of, still one of the richest countries, one of the largest economies in the world. And I know that our current Labour government seems to have a fixation on growth, but there are other options there. There's progressive taxation, there's there's redistribution, there are other ways to solve these problems. And I think too often it's it's those who are most vulnerable and most in need who are at the sharp end. And I think, you know, it's 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 out of touch to suggest that the political choice to continue with austerity is more difficult than the suffering wrought by it. And that's why I feel the original motion is stronger without the amendments.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Kennedy?
I'd just like to add to what councillor Francis has just said there. You know, it it seems to me that the first change in this, you know, it goes back to blaming the Conservatives. The Labour Party have now been in power for just over a hundred days. They've done absolutely nothing to address any of the problems as far as I can see. In fact, they've made things ten times worse. And, you know, the black hole that they refer to, this twenty two billion, we still haven't had an explanation as to what the Conservatives left behind. So all I can see from this amendment is that we're, is a Labour council trying to deflect from the diabolical job that the Labour government has done. And I would stand by what councillor Francis has just said and that the original motion is far stronger and it doesn't need this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Brown?
I'm sorry to take issue, but in the mixed picture that we have and the landscape that we're looking at with the incoming government, they're getting rid of zero hours contracts, they're getting rid of no fault evictions. These are granular, these are small changes. And I can only say that after fourteen years, people are massively impatient. They've been flat footed over fuel allowances as well. It is a mixed picture. But there are granular changes that will lead to traction, hopefully for a better society. It's not enough, it can come fast enough, but there's no denying the reality rubbing. You start and get rid of zero hours contracts, you start and get rid of no fault evictions. You're on a better path. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Clare, then councillor Kilgore.
Madam Mayor, I stand in support of the amended motion. How anyone can really support the former Tory government's record and after a hundred days try and blame the Labour Party and government is just beyond me.
Point of information, Lady Mayor.
Yes, no, I didn't interrupt. Yes, no, I didn't interrupt you, so please don't interrupt me.
Point of information.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, years of austerity under the former Tory government has brought real acute hardship to those most in need within our community. The alarming statistics highlighted in the motion are a damning indictment of many deliberatory policies, and I think was councillor Francis said earlier on, deliberatory policies brought about by their ideological hatred of local government. And if the truth was known, they are opposition to real, meaningful devolution. The former Tory government was seen as the most centralist government in decades. Years of underfunding in local government or anything in the public sector, be it the National Health Service, schools, or indeed the welfare fabric of society, will require a massive redirection in funding and a vision to halt further decline. We have turned the page under Labour. Labour do realise the importance of change and have demonstrated their commitment to devolution. And I do mention devolution because I think devolution is the heart and soul of change. Having already met with regional mayors to help shape future central government policy, local government will be a key partner in those discussions, and regional mayors will have a direct conduit to number 10. We need to embrace an approach where all levels of government work in collaboration to help target fund it to those areas that make a real difference to individuals and the delivery of service. Devolved budgets for local government and focused targets with accountability for deliverance should be the way forward. We really need to justify spend set against the huge deficit created by the last government, but not at the expense of local provision. This government will be more focused and devolved to the regions, and I sincerely support the amended motion.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Kennedy?
Just point of information, at no point did I say that I supported anything the last government had done. And if that's your answer over the black hole that we have, maybe we should ask the 4,000 potential pensioners that are going to die this winter to fill that black hole. Then how you can make such a statement, you're a disgrace.
Councillor Kilgore?
Madam Mayor, it was really a point of information, too. I think as councillor Kennedy, obviously in opposition, it is far easier to be in opposition than to be in the ruling group or also to be in government. It is really challenging. What I would say is, is that he mentions the 100 days. What about the five years that we have seen, you know, independent members grow in this chamber and are yet to bring an alternative budget?
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two points, really. The first point was to come back to councillor Clare, when he got about people supporting the last government and the debt that's left wing and all the rest of it. But I would say now, with councillor Clare and a few of his councillors, how can they stand by the last leader who robbed the people of this place blind? Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Out of order, councillor Roberts.
Sure. So you, you stand by him all the time?
Councillor Roberts, please.
I would like, I would like to answer that shift to you. The last leader was innocent. He did not...
Madam Mayor, this is...
He did not...
Councillor Roberts?
He did not steal anything. The police investigated for three years. And yet you are accusing him of being a thief. Now, I find that, I find that really out of order, especially given that certain people in this chamber are hiding a lot.
Councillor Roberts, please. Councillor Roberts, please. I don't want to have to remove two councillors from the chamber. Please. Right. Councillor Barclay?
Would you like to reply? You've just threatened me there, councillor Roberts. You have. You passed something on to your mate. I'm sorry, but I don't appreciate that sort of threat in the chamber. You said you will pass it on to your mate. So what does that mean if it's not a threat? I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, for interrupting, but that is not appropriate.
Madam Mayor? Councillor, where's your... Councillor Kilgore? Councillor Roberts, please. I really don't want to have to exclude two councillors at one council meeting for disrupting a meeting, so please. Right, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Councillor Barclay?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. South Tyneside Council has survived the most draconian funding cuts in the country since austerity measures began. The council has to continue to make stringent choices in respect of budget cuts. We know only too well that what we want to deliver and what we can afford to deliver is dependent on the funding we receive. We have to balance our aspirations with the revenue received. 50% of adults in South Tyneside are facing financial insecurity. We want fairer and more equitable funding for local government. Change at community level needs government to ensure councils can deliver quality public services that meets the needs of our residents and communities. Please support the amendment. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Barclay. Councillor Ford?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm very similar to my colleague councillor Curtis. I am very frustrated with this amendment in that clearly the amendments in red on the on the on the front page of what received are factual and simply add to the 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 motion and are in the spirit of the motion. However, the removals of particularly the in the actual resolution, the action from this motion, to 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 actually amend this motion, to remove, to call for an end to local government austerity and a significant and substantial investment in local government and public services, and to remove the final clause with additional financial support from central government to fund future pay, local government pay awards, which I'm sure that Labour colleagues would be absolutely in favour of wherever it is financially acceptable, where independent pay review bodies agree, you know, we... I cannot understand why this council, Labour members of this council would vote to remove a call for increasing our... It's it's simply calling on the government to give us some more money. That's all it's doing. What is so objectionable about that? Why wouldn't we dare to do that when it's needed?
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Brown?
Madam Mayor, I don't wish to delay the motion or detract, but I have to say again, you know, we can't put officers in an invidious position where they're forced to defend themselves and speak when they wouldn't normally speak. And I have a boundary issue about it. I really do.
Councillor?
Well, I'm simply saying, it's an invidious position that they put in. And if I pass a comment like what I passed, I worked in mental health, but I wasn't a doctor, and I wouldn't come out with a with a kind of a bracket of an officer in in those terms. Can I just simply say, though, I know passions will run high. I know there's a history, and I'm not trying to make that worse. And you might think I'm tweed and I'm a bit soft, but I'll just say this. We had a really good start to day across all parties in the conference that we had. And just in a gentle moment, we were given Noah's pudding as we came out. And I'm not going to all the ingredients, but it includes spring water, wheat sugar, chickpeas, beans, lemon, pomegranate, apple, almond, walnut. And it then goes on to say it includes love, respect and tolerance. And it excludes, and I'm not saying this applies to anybody in here, but this is what the council was against this morning, selfishness here, discrimination and despair. We really have to have language that will be generative, that will consider positive strokes, right across the board, mind, but allow for the frustrations of people who have a passion and wish to speak. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Brown. I'm sorry, you both have spoken once. I can't allow you to speak twice. Councillor Carter?
Oh, sorry, Geraldine, you didn't speak. No, you didn't. Yeah. Madam Mayor? Yes, she did. I did speak, but it's... I'm sorry, councillor, you have spoken once. Well, it's a point of information.
Councillor Carter?
Would you like to...
You have a point of information? Right, okay then, councillor Kilgore?
Point of information is also for clarification. I'd like to know if the officer felt threatened and accepted that apology. Because if not, and if that officer did feel threatened, as I suspect she did and said, then then I move 34.4 again, because you are, we are intimidated, or there's an attempt at intimidation. You are, you are not...
Councillor Roberts? We really must move on. Councillor Roberts, please. We cannot have this behaviour in this council chamber. We really can't. We still have a lot of, lot of work to get through. Right.
Just a quick comment. I've sort of sat here, I haven't sort of spoken about any motions, but because my colleagues are, I trust them implicitly. But at the same time, I am getting rather bored with this situation in the fact that, you know, people are talking totally, totally irrelevantly, and it's a case of, it's not getting anything moved forward for our residents. At the end, at the call of this, you know, meeting, our residents matter more than anything else. And I really, really think that we need to respect them and talk about the topics. Okay?
Thank you, councillor. Right, councillor Carter?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just to write you a part on the amendment, so that's what we're doing now. So just to be clear, we're not trying to take anything away about, you know, austerity's there, but we don't think Labour government have made, well, in the first 100 years, they haven't made any announcements about local government fund. Eh? What did I say? Oh, well, it's been a long night. I think what we're after is a fair and equality equity of funding compared to other councils. We're in the top 10 of the least money that we get from government, or we did under the Conservatives, and we have to change that. We have to be there, talking to government to make sure that we get the funding that we deserve. But it's about, you know, it's about raising, sorry, it's about ensuring that local government and public services receive the substantial amount that we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the amendment agreed? It's a dissenting voice, we need to take a vote. Show of hands, please. Who is for the amendment? Against? Is there any abstentions, please?
No. So the amendment is carried, 23 votes to 19 against...
So colleagues, the amendment is carried, 23 to 19. Therefore, the motion as amended now takes the place of the original motion. This is now the substantive motion, to which any further amendments are moved. Do any other members wish to ask a question? Speak or move another amendment. Councillor Francis, as the original proposer, do you wish to reply to the debate?
Very briefly, I would just like to echo the comments that councillor Ford made. And I think, you know, ultimately, it's a very simple thing. We need more money coming into local government, we need more money coming into this council so we can do the best for our residents, who have been really hardly hit by the austerity measures over the last 14 years. I'm very disappointed that the original motion has been amended, but I'm glad that we will, as the amendment says, calling for a sustained uplift to local authority funding. I think that's absolutely essential in order to deliver for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, this is the motion as... Is the, is the motion agreed? Agreed, thank you. Motion two. Motion two has been submitted by councillor Kennedy, Owens Palmer, Thompson, Robertson, Roberts, Brennan, Wood, Myers, Hamilton, Oliver, Foggan, Harrison and Coles. Councillor Kennedy, please present your motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Right, this is to do with the Labour-led government ending winter fuel payments for our pensioners and restrict eligibility to only those in receipt of pension credits and other benefits. The additional strain this decision will place on vulnerable pensioners, many of whom do not claim pension credit despite being eligible, further exacerbating their hard, their financial hardship. The decision to means test winter fuel payments, especially with such short notice and without adequate compensatory measures, is deeply unfair and will disproportionately affect the health and wellbeing of our poorest older residents. As winter looms, the government's approach fails to consider the administrative barriers and stigma that prevent our eligible pensioners from claiming pension credit, leaving many without the support they desperately need. The significant role that the winter fuel payments play in helping our older residents of South Tyneside and across the UK afford heating during the coldest months, thereby preventing heat or heat dilemmas and safeguarding health. South Tyneside Council is deeply concerned that many pensioners on lower and middle incomes will now receive the payments across, sorry, will now receive the payments. Across England and Wales, the number of people eligible for winter fuel payments will fall by 10 million. In South Tyneside, the number of pensioners affected by the change in eligibility criteria is 23,607. That means 82.1% of pensioners currently eligible for the winter fuel payments will no longer be able to claim the payments from this winter onwards. We believe that this Labour government has set the threshold at which pensioners do not qualify for the payments far too low, and only those refusing, receiving a pension of less than £218.50 a week or £332.95 for couples are eligible for pension credits. This significantly... This is significantly lower than the living wage. We're all so concerned at the low take-up of pension credit with only 63% of those eligible nationwide receiving them and over 880,000 pensioners not doing so. Recognise the role that we have to play to increase awareness of benefits such as pension credit to ensure people are aware of the support they are entitled to. And we should note that the energy price cap is due to rise by 10% in October, which combined with the removal of the the fuel payments will push thousands of local pensioners into fuel poverty. A report published by Labour has claimed that restricting the winter fuel allowance to pensioners on benefits could cost up to 4,000 pensioner lives. We would ask that the council leader write to the Chancellor of the Exchequer, calling for an immediate reversal of these draconian measures. I'd also request that the councillor write to our Borough MPs, Emma Lewel Book and Jaro MP Kate Osborne, who represent our pensioners and their families, and ask them to give their formal support reversing the changes by writing to the Chancellor of the Exchequer. And I would request that all group leaders within South Tyneside Council's council sign a joint letter to the Chancellor of the Exchequer, calling for the new winter fuel payment policy to be reversed. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Kennedy. Is the motion seconded?
Seconded.
Councillor, would you like to speak now for three minutes or reserve your right?
I'll speak now, thank you. This motion has got, obviously, some links to the...
This motion has got obviously some links to the previous motion and its debate and the impact of austerity over the last decade, especially on older people. I understand that the Labour government failed to conduct an impact assessment on how this decision to remove the winter fuel allowance would affect our pensioners. It now seems clear that there may be thousands, thousands of additional deaths in that vulnerable group, and this simply is not acceptable in this day and age. Despite our council's assertion that recently they've ramped up their aims to reach all of those who are eligible for pension credit and who have not yet claimed it, and their admirable aims, I'm not denying that at all. I understand that still there are three thousands of our older residents who have not yet made those claims despite being eligible for the receipt of pension credit. These people are at serious risk. And that risk is simply not acceptable. No one should die cold in this day and age. Those whose income is above the pitiful income which pension credit provides are often earning thousands less than the suggested living wage for people in that age group. This disgraceful measure taken by this Labour government must be reversed without delay. And our council leader must also, without delay, write to the Chancellor of the Exchequer and calling for the linking of the winter fuel payment to the pensions credit to be immediately rescinded and reversed before winter sets in.
Thank you, councillor. The motion is now open to debate by members. Do any members wish to ask a question? Speak on the motion or move an amendment. Councillor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I fully support this motion and very much welcome it. I would like to actually add to this motion, please. Loughborough University recently published a report following research carried out this year, two thousand and twenty-four. This research concluded that the minimum annual income for a retired person living on their own should be fourteen thousand four hundred per annum, and as a couple, twenty-two thousand four hundred per annum. This is the absolute minimum, which is nothing like what it should be. We ask that if the winter fuel allowance is to be means tested, that the cap for claiming pension credit should be raised to at least the minimum accepted annual income. This would actually mean for someone living on their own, an increase of three thousand per annum, minimum, and for a couple, four thousand per annum. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the amendment seconded?
Seconded.
Thank you, councillor. Do you wish to speak now or?
Reserve the right.
Reserve your right. Thank you. Do any members wish to ask a question or speak on the amendment? Councillor Kennedy? Brennan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to say that's here. I fully welcome the amendment from the Greens. And I would support that as I feel that it does add some strength to the original motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Brennan. Sorry, councillor Brennan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This Labour government has made a huge error in making changes to the winter fuel payment. And it's going to make some of the most elderly and vulnerable in our society suffer. Elderly people who have given and contributed to our society all their lives are now put at risk and face the prospect of a cold winter shivering in their homes because they can't afford to put the heating on. Age UK is quoting four out of five pensioners are below or on the poverty line. And changes in South Tyneside will see some twenty-three thousand pensioners affected. Means testing pensioners with such short notice and asking them to sign up for pension credit with the cold weather now upon us is a cruel insult. Some of these pensioners who are unable to apply through disability or lack of technical know-how will undoubtedly slip through the net. This is a crazy decision by a party who's pretending to be for the poorest and vulnerable in society and now appears to have turned their backs on them in a cost-cutting measure. This is an outrage and it's a disgrace. There are still hundreds of thousands of pensioners nationwide under the threshold that are not claiming pension credit. Pensioners who have high energy needs because of illness or disabilities. And those low-income earners who just miss out on pension credit are all at risk. To add insult to injury, we've had our two MPs abstaining and sitting on their hands on the very board where they should have been, standing up for the borough's elderly. This isn't good enough, and this decision needs to be overturned immediately. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Brennan. Councillor Myers?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This Labour-led government made a recent announcement to end universal winter fuel payments for our pensioners, only limiting those to certain conditions who receive pension credits and other benefits. Stress will no doubt be put on pensioners who are already suffering financial strain, who need more compassion from the government. Many do not claim pension credit, even though they are entitled to it, even satisfying the appropriate conditions. As the British winter will be soon upon us, this Labour government declines to consider that vulnerable pensioners will be left with dire risk and consequences, many of whom who are already in declining health. Some live alone without any family. It will create a huge dilemma. Do I cut down on food to keep warm or vice versa? Either way, this will have a dangerous effect on health, leading to many being hospitalized if they are lucky enough to be helped by someone. In just South Tyneside alone, the number of pensioners affected by lack of fuel is twenty-three thousand six hundred and seven, meaning that eighty-two percent of pensioners currently eligible for winter fuel payment will no longer be able to claim the payment this winter continuing forward. Plus the fact that the heating bills are rising quite substantially by ten percent this winter, many pensioners will just not survive. Hypothermia is a terrible condition. When the body temperature drops, the heart, nervous system and other organs can't work as well as they usually do. Left untreated, hypothermia can cause the heart and respiratory system to fail and eventually can lead to death. So when pensioners cannot keep warm in winter, this is what can happen. Stopping fuel allowance will create thousands of hospital admissions and deaths. This will be an absolute disgrace and it will be unstoppable if nothing is done about it. I think we all need to get behind this motion tonight. We need to send message about what this government has done is unacceptable, full stop. We need more action from our MPs and abstaining on this isn't acceptable. Please vote for this motion tonight. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor, please.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I just want to talk about the positives. Obviously, what's done can be undone, to quote Lady Macbeth in Shakespeare's play. You know, from my perspective, it's our communities, our residents in South Tyneside that we are responsible for. And yes, we can write to ministers and this has already been done. We've already, you know, through communications, through all our channels in the Labour Party, you know, things have been rolling and set in motion. But let's talk about our council and our residents, you know. You know, the council notes the changes to the winter fuel payment and recognises that while many pensioners will still receive the benefit, some pensioners on higher incomes may not get that. Now, the council is working with as many pensioners as we can who are entitled to pension credit. And the council welcomes the government's announcement that starting in October, the hundred and fifty pound warm house discount will be available to low-income households. We also commend, and I don't think there's anybody here tonight from that department, the work of the Revenues and Benefits Team for its ongoing work in identifying and supporting eligible pensioners to apply for pension credit and thus receive the winter fuel payment. Now, it's a priority of the council, you know, to resolve and enhance its awareness campaign regarding those people and targeting those people who need to uptake the pension credits. So we are publicising that and the assistance available is there. And we're trying to support those, especially this winter, particularly those under the Household Support Fund. We've always been on the front foot, this council, to try and alleviate poverty. We hosted a pension credit awareness campaign earlier this year and we're doing so again. Last year, we helped over a hundred residents with one resident obtaining five thousand pounds. We've written to eleven hundred, one thousand one hundred residents eligible for pension credit but not claiming it. It's estimated that almost three thousand older people on South Tyneside are missing out on around thirty-two pounds a week. That's something we need to correct, and we are trying to correct it. We've held two anti-poverty summits to boost partnership working over the last two years. And our engagement work with the community and third sector partners, who are very, very, very important voluntary organisations, have also enabled us to have a more cohesive and effective approach to tackling poverty. We are committed, as a council, to making our welfare services as efficient as possible to deliver for residents. And I believe we are trying our best and we are succeeding. We are proactive. Last year, we provided two thousand low-income households with an additional one hundred pound council tax rebate to help with the council, the cost of living. We also provided five thousand vulnerable pensioners with financial support. And I understand the opposition, you know, and why you're doing what you do. But this council is trying its best, as councillor Francis said with his motion, with the limited resources that we've had over the years with cuts, 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 from when I was first elected in two thousand and three to where we are now. And I found this figure out when I was doing a bit of research. I'm disappointed to learn that this region had a disparity between ours and other regions of two hundred and twenty-one point six million pounds. Just think what we could do with that. One in four people, one in four children are in poverty. And I'm standing here, and I'm not going to brag or anything like that. But I've always been involved in helping people in poverty. I was in an organisation for many decades called the St Vincent de Paul Society, which was founded in eighteen twenty by a Parisian lawyer to eradicate poverty. I can't stand poverty. I don't understand why we should have poverty. As again councillor Francis said, we're one of the richest countries in the world. We shouldn't be in that position in no way, no shape or form. I have thirty seconds, Madam Mayor, if that's okay. As the mayor last year, what I did, because I want to eradicate poverty, is I set up my mayor's charity to help boost the people who are helping to tackle poverty in the borough, the six, you know, like hospitality and hope, heaven helps, et cetera, et cetera. Also, money is going to be donated to South Tyneside Hospital Radio. But I don't just stand here and say words and read words. I believe in what I'm saying. We, as a council, are going to try our best to make sure and alleviate what the government have done. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Francis?
Have a point of information, please. Point of information. I just wanted to reply to councillor McCabe, if that's all right. I think it's really quite sad that there is some on the Labour benches that feel as if we're attacking you for not providing the money that our pensioners need. I think we went off-piste a little bit on the last comment. What we are actually asking for in this motion is that the leader of our council writes to the chancellor to ask them to reverse the removal of the winter fuel allowance, not to do anything else to do with how you support younger people, which is admirable. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Francis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, first of all, just to respond to councillor McCabe. I know that this is an issue that he feels very strongly about in terms of poverty and inequality in society and in our borough. And certainly, when I served as a member of People Select Committee under your chairship, it was clearly evident how much this meant to you. So what I would say is we're trying to amplify the voices here of people who too often feel unheard. And I know that there's amazing work that goes on by the council in this borough to try and plug the gaps and stop people falling through the cracks. But the people that really have the power to do something about that on a large scale is the government, is the national government. The decision to means test winter fuel payments and exclude eighty-two percent of South Tyneside pensioners is a harsh blow to those already struggling. As we've heard, that change affects twenty-three thousand six hundred and seven local pensioners, many of whom face the choice between heating or eating as energy prices soar. Worse still, many of those eligible for pension credit aren't claiming it, leaving thousands of vulnerable people unprotected. Now, this has been one of the few concrete changes that have come in the first hundred days of the Labour government, and that doesn't bode well for me. The rug has been pulled out from underneath people just as the winter months approached. People thought they had that money. They were relying on having that money to heat their homes, and they now know they don't have it. And I don't remember any mention of this, by the way, in the run-up to the general election earlier this year. There should be no shame in welfare and benefits. And the government should be there to provide help to those who need it, and people should not be scared or afraid or ashamed to accept help. Winter fuel payments save lives, up to four thousand per winter, according to some estimates. This policy must be reversed. No one should have to choose between staying warm or staying fit. We must act now to demand fairness for our pensioners.
And you, councillor Dixon? Or councillor Clare?
Chair, on hindsight, I think the government would be the first to acknowledge they would have done things differently to the way they announced the withdrawal of the winter fuel payment. I am pleased the council have reacted quickly and positively by establishing the awareness campaign, encouraging residents to attend sessions, supporting those eligible for pension credits in a constructive, sensitive way. Colleagues, that campaign must continue, and I would urge the council to double their efforts, working with other agencies, even if it means knocking on every door in the borough. The council advised some, eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand pounds has been secured for residents who would otherwise have missed out if it was not for their efforts. So we'd like to take this opportunity to thank the council and other agencies for that. But there is still more work to do. By the council's own calculations, there are still some three hundred people out in the borough eligible for pension credit who we need to reach out to, and that must be done sooner rather than later. Madam Mayor, the whole system of one-off payments for pensioners without question should be under review. And I firmly believe the government are doing just that. Why should pensioners have to wait until there is a drop in temperature for the cold weather payment or must rely upon the winter fuel allowance to offset the extortionate price of energy? The allowance and payments of this nature are not guaranteed, not sustainable, and pensioners deserve better. Pensioners deserve sustainable, long-term solutions and not one-off payments. The government recognise that too, and that's why they have guaranteed the triple lock, and this hasn't been said, they guaranteed the triple lock to boost the state pension, which will make a real difference of four hundred and sixty pounds per year. A consolidated amount guaranteed a real state pension increase. I believe government also needs to invest in, sorry, the tax threshold for state pension and raise where appropriate. So the increase of the triple lock will remain just that, an increase. What pensioners need is a state pension fit for purpose without the need for one-off payments and break this cycle of anxiety. Government are also looking at the cost of energy and working with suppliers, an ambitious project with the creation of a publicly owned company, British Energy, which will secure benefits and in the longer term help influence energy prices. Madam Mayor, I have no doubt tackling the root causes of those financial pressures and with the financial support such as a rise in state pension, I have no doubt pensioners will be better off eventually on the labour.
Point of information, Madam Mayor?
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Curtis? Councillor Davies has got a point of information, Madam Mayor.
The winter fuel allowance was a universal benefit. It wasn't something that was discretionary from the chancellor. It was there enshrined with law, and it's gone away with legislation. It wasn't something that was there to, as a, as a, as a payment that was there, as you equated it to the cold weather payment. It was there, guaranteed, coming every single year.
Councillor Curtis?
Madam Mayor, I must rise as a point of information because that's not quite true. The payment was never guaranteed. A one-off payment is never guaranteed. Like the cold weather payment is never guaranteed. Like the cold weather payment is never guaranteed.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Curtis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to invite everyone to set aside party political politics and focus what matters, which is our pensioners going to be cold in their house over winter. I would invite you to ask, is it going to benefit or disadvantage the residents who live in your ward? Is removing universal winter fuel payments going to leave your residents better off or worse off? And just vote on that basis. If you think they're going to be better off, then go ahead. But I think you need to be explicit and explain to residents why you would do that. Likewise, are residents who live in your area going to be better off with an ask for higher pension credit or for things to kind of remain the same? And I think that fundamentally is the important issue, you know. And I think people can kind of snipe at each other about which party is doing what. But at the centre of it, it's like people's quality of life over winter. And we've got an opportunity here to improve that. And I think we should all band together to do that.
Councillor Ford?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And yes, just to reiterate that I do welcome some of the plans of this new government. However, those are plans for bringing down energy prices, for sorting out the energy so-called free market mess that we have. We also need to urgently have a fairer, more reliable benefit system where there is no poverty. I absolutely agree with councillor McCabe. It is shocking that we still have poverty, that we still have the ability of a government to make people destitute through sanctions, through all sorts of things that this last Tory government and coalition government before that did. And I think that I do pay tribute to the previous Labour government that did bring in tax credits and other measures to reduce child poverty. Now, we need this government to be doing exactly that sort of level of ambitious reduction of poverty. And it is absolutely I can't find the right word. It is so disappointing, is a mild word, that the government's first real fiscal measure was the winter fuel payment withdrawal and making it means tested on pension credit level. Because, and I understand that they thought, right, this is something, we have to do it now because otherwise the payments will go out. There won't be time to stop it later on and wait for the budget. But that was a political decision to wait for the budget, to have the budget this month and not immediately. And so I do appreciate the challenges for a new government. However, right now, as councillor Curtis said, there are pensioners who will be not receiving that money. And what this amendment seeks to do is to say, well, we want the winter fuel payment universal for this year. Maybe things will be put in place by this new government by next winter that everything will be much better and fairer and you won't need it. That's fair enough. But this winter, we need it now. If that is not acceptable, we should certainly consider that it shouldn't be means tested at this low level of pension credit, that it should be the people who are just over the cliff edge of pension credit, just like lots of other cliff edges of universal credit for free school meals, children, that I saw when I worked in the school office, the parents who were earning just that bit too much. And we say we want to enable people to work.
Councillor Ford, one minute.
Thank you. That is the danger of means testing benefits. Yes, you want to stop people who are very rich receiving government money. However, there is a tax system that is supposed to claw back that money from them and redistribute. So what we need is this amendment to this motion. We need the motion and we need the amendment to it, to improve it, to ask for decent a decent winter where people are not faced with this horrific choice that has been outlined. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Coombs?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to take up the point of the councillor opposite talk. I used to work in the energy industry and I now pay over my two metres £347 a year daily standing charge on both electric and gas. I used to pay £36 a year for the daily standing charge. The daily standing charge is applied even though there was no maintenance on the meter. The meter was not red. There's no safety check done on the meter. And the meters, which are the energy companies are charging for, is not actually owned by that company either. That £347 could be knocked on the head and nobody would need to have the winter fuel allowance. You would no longer need to pay to the ones that's eligible for the pension credit either. It would be a cost saving all round. I don't know why we can't have the energy companies take the task and have this knocked on the head because we're paying for nothing. £347 a year, which the government also adds high percent to, and they're taking that off each and one year. And that's over about 40 million customers per year. That's a massive amount of money for nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. Just obviously following on. I was going to mention the triple lock as well, which you've actually done, councillor Clare, so I'll not go into that. But I just want to just highlight a couple of things. Obviously, you know, we're talking about pensioners, but as a council, we have responsibilities to all of our residents in this borough. And I just want to just touch, if you'd just indulge me for just a couple of minutes, Madam Mayor, because, you know, poverty and welfare support was a major focus for me from day one of coming into this seat of honour. And that's why it's actually one of our first ambitions in South Tyneside is to make residents financially secure. We started back in 2020, actually, with the Poverty Commission, which was by the Place Selects Committee, which actually helped us shape the anti-poverty strategy. That started in 2020 by this Labour-led council, who is looking to support our residents and continue to do from a local aspect. All of this is actually underpinned by the partnership working. I mean, we've got some fantastic work going on in South Tyneside and we work together with our partners. We don't do this alone. We support our food banks. We get support from the citizens' advice. We work with them. And then, of course, there's now the North East Combined Authority. And no organisation, as I've already said, can do this on their own because it's of a magnitude. That's why we established two years ago the South Tyneside Poverty Group. It's already been mentioned about the two anti-poverty summits to boost the partnership working. Just last week, I actually went to the closing of the Child Poverty Summit, which some elected members were at. And I'm sure you'll agree, colleagues from across the chamber, it was a huge success with partners around that table. And the feedback will actually feed into our child poverty strategy. We've listened to our residents through the Poverty Truth Commission, our key partners, the South Tyneside Youth Council and many more. And we know that's going to be precious this winter with rising energy. You've just touched upon the energy companies and other costs. And we've done a number of other things. I want to talk about our children. We've provided free school meals through the summer holidays. And we've helped 8,150 residents with vouchers for meals, free school meals. The Half Project, it's been a huge success. I mean, we've been across this borough where there's been over 6,000 children over the past academic year with 28,000 sessions across the spring, summer and winter holidays. This is our council leading. We've piloted with three schools and we've got three pilots, sorry, pilots going on with three schools to reduce the cost of the school day for our parents and children. We've invested in our family hubs despite the huge cuts that's been made to this council since 2010, which provides parenting skills, supporting families. And we've had over 50,000 contracts from over eight and a half thousand children, young people, parents and carers. We've got a dedicated support for care leavers, free travel. This is this Labour-led council delivering for residents in this borough despite being starved of cash over the last 14 years. We've talked about our pensioners. We've talked about the drop-in session that we had on Monday. Again, that session was facilitated over a very short space of time to get the message out there to our pensioners to ensure they have the opportunity to learn about pension credit. And it's already, I'll be quick. I'll be quick. And I don't know if any members went to that pension drop-in session, but I actually did. And I'm going to just give you one positive case study that came out of that from an elderly lady who should have been persuaded to attend by her neighbour. She was visibly shaken and nervous to access any additional funding and she was worried she would be arrested. The welfare support team worked closely with this lady and she is eligible for pension credit and other entitlements equating to over £160 a week. We've just talked about how many pensioners in this borough are not accessing it. We have a responsibility to get that message out there. It is up to us as politicians to help support our pensioners and getting that message out there and getting them the benefits that they're entitled to. I could go on and on and on and on and on, Madam Mayor. This council is supporting our residents. Every resident in this borough has been given the opportunity of support. And I can't go on anymore because you've just cut us off. So can I just say, you know, welcoming places? Every elected member should know what a welcoming place is, what that welcoming place actually offers. If you don't, you need to read the newsletter as that comes out via the email. And it's really, really successful. So, Madam Mayor, I will close there. I just want to let you know, colleagues across this chamber, sorry, I'm just finishing off there, across the chamber, that, you know, we are council that is supporting our residents, our vulnerable and our pensioners, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor? Councillor Davies? Councillor Davies, do you want to have your right of reply, your reserve?
Yes, but I think councillor Jen's got a point of information.
No, mine was right to reply to my amendment.
You end the debate, councillor.
Okay, so it's me. Right, yeah, sorry. Procedure. I'll learn it eventually. Thank you very much for that wide-ranging debate where we've moved a lot, quite often off thinking about our elderly residents and broader about poverty. I think in summary, we really need to think about the 3,000 residents that are not claiming pension credit that are eligible. And the challenge from the leader to make sure we spread that message as much as possible, it's something I am certainly very conscious of in my own ward, in my upcoming newsletter, absolutely. And that doesn't, however, dissuade me that this needs to be abandoned for this year. There has not been enough time. There was not an impact assessment. And a conservative estimate, I think, is 4,000 deaths this year on top of the additional strain that that will place on the NHS with cold, ill elderly people and then the additional things that come from a hospital stay. And because of that, we need to have this restored and then properly considered and implemented after this budget. It's very simple. It's one year. In the Covid times, we ran up a deficit of £300 billion. In one year, we're saving pennies in comparison to affect the most vulnerable in our society. And that is why I completely support this amendment. I completely support this motion. And I hope the members opposite agree.
Thank you. Councillor Jen, as the proposer of the amendment, do you wish to close the debate?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just to respond with regards, it is our responsibility to make sure that our pensioners are claiming what they should be claiming, the pension credit. However, the amount at which they are able to claim that credit is so low. It does not allow them at that level to live a good life, being able to eat well and heat their houses well. That level needs to be raised to what is considered the minimal amount that they should be living on in order to live a very basic life. That doesn't include going on holiday. It doesn't include luxuries. That figure was basic. And therefore, that's why I support the amendment. So no matter how many pensioners we tell, you must claim your credit, that is still too low. There are not enough pensioners who can claim that credit. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Colleagues, is councillor Jen's amendment to councillor Kennedy's motion agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you.
Elected members, I'll read your name out each in turn and if you just let me know if you're for, against or abstaining from the amendment put forward by councillor Jen. Councillor Barclay?
Against.
Councillor Brennan?
For.
Councillor Brown? Councillor Carter?
Against.
Councillor Clare?
Against.
Councillor Coombs?
For.
Councillor Curtis?
For.
Councillor Davies?
For.
Councillor Dawes?
Against.
Councillor Peaden?
Against.
Councillor Esteen?
Against.
Councillor Dixon?
Against.
Councillor Ellison? Councillor Foggan? Councillor Ford?
For.
Councillor Forman? Has he gone? Councillor?
For.
Councillor Francis?
For.
Councillor Gibson? Councillor Gibson?
Against.
Councillor Jen?
For.
Councillor, oh, she's gone, sorry. Councillor Herbert? Councillor Keegan? Councillor Kennedy?
For.
Councillor Kilgawa? Councillor Lisk? Councillor N Maxwell?
Yes.
Councillor McCabe? Councillor McKeown? Councillor McKeown? Councillor Melling? Councillor Myers?
For.
Councillor Owens Palmer?
For.
Councillor Porthouse? Councillor Proudlock? Councillor K Roberts?
For.
Councillor T Roberts? Councillor Stonehouse? Councillor J Taylor? Councillor R Taylor?
Computer, please turn the mics on for people watching at home. Against. For, I mean, for.
Councillor Trina? Councillor Welsh? Councillor Wood?
So the amendment has not been carried. There was 21 against and 24. Councillor Roberts, please. So now, councillor Roberts? Colleagues, is the original motion without amendment, which remains the substantive motion, agreed?
Agreed.
Are there any dissenting voices? It's agreed. Sorry, councillor Kennedy. Councillor Kennedy, as the original proposer, do you wish to reply to the debate on the original motion?
I certainly do, Madam Mayor. And all I can say is from the other side of the room, every one of yous, apart from councillor Forman, should hang your heads in shame that you will allow our pensioners to freeze this winter when they can ill afford it. And how yous can sit there now is, we're about to bring a motion in about voter ID. You'll need more than voter ID to get through in 2026 after this shambles of a vote. You're a disgrace, the lot of yous.
So, colleagues, is the original, councillors, please? Please. Councillor Roberts? Colleagues, is the original motion without the amendment, which remains the substantive motion, agreed?
Agreed.
Is there dissenting voices? Can we have a show of hands, please? Name board, can we have five? Thank you. The name board, please.
Okay, so the same applies, elected members, I'll read your name. And if you let me know if you're for, against or abstaining on the original motion without amendment. Councillor Barclay?
Against.
Councillor Barclay? Sorry, can I, Madam Mayor, I can't hear. Councillor Barclay?
Against.
Councillor Brennan?
For.
Councillor Brown?
For.
Councillor Carter?
Against.
Councillor Clare?
Against.
Councillor Coombs?
For.
Councillor Curtis?
For a motion that stops people freezing in their homes over winter.
Councillor Curtis, is that for or against? Can you just say, please?
Four.
Four.
Councillor Davies?
For.
Councillor Dawes?
Against.
Councillor Peadine?
Against.
Councillor Estine? Councillor Dixon?
Against.
Councillor Ellison? Councillor Foggan?
For.
Councillor Ford?
For.
Councillor Forman's gone. Councillor Francis?
For.
Councillor Gibson? Councillor Gibson, against. Councillor Jen?
Councillor Roberts.
Can I conduct the vote that you've asked for, please?
Yes, sir.
Councillor Jen Roberts?
For.
I can't hear them because you're speaking with all respect, so please, I can hear them if we're just.
Councillor Roberts, please.
Councillor Jen?
For.
Councillor Herbert? Councillor Keegan? Councillor Kennedy?
For.
Councillor Kilgawa? Councillor Lisk? Councillor N Maxwell? Councillor McCabe? Councillor McHugh? Councillor McKeown?
For.
Councillor Melling? Councillor Myers?
For.
Councillor Owens Palmer?
For.
Councillor Porthouse? Councillor Proudlock? Councillor Kier Roberts?
For.
Councillor T Roberts?
For.
Councillor Stonehouse?
For.
Councillor J Taylor? Councillor R Taylor?
For.
Councillor Traynor? Councillor Welsh? Councillor Wood?
For.
Nineteen. So the motion is not carried on the basis of nineteen votes for and twenty one votes against. Thank you. Colleagues, the motion has not been carried. There was nineteen four and twenty one against. Thank you, we'll now move on. Motion three, can I suggest that we just step in, bang and close? Yes. Colleagues, I'm conscious of the time and we still have one more motion to debate. So unless the meeting agrees otherwise, where three hours have elapsed since the commencement of the meeting, the meeting will automatically end in accordance with rule twenty eight four. Unless we agree otherwise, can we agree to continue this meeting to discuss the third motion? Yes. Agreed?
Agree.
Not agreed.
Thank you.
Not agreed.
Oh, it's not agreed, right? A vote, please, yes.
So can you raise your hand, please, members, for those in agreement, extend the meeting past three hours? Those against extending the meeting past three hours?
So the meeting can, that twenty six, four and fifteen against. So the meeting can progress past three hours, which we still have ten minutes.
Right.
On the basis of twenty six votes for and fifteen votes against.
Right. Colleagues, we have agreed as a council to continue past nine o'clock to continue to finish our business on the basis that twenty six were for continuing and fifteen against. So we will now continue with motion three. Motion three has been submitted by councillors Carter, Barclay, Portouse, Forman and Keegan. Councillor Carter, please present your motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to colleagues for extending the time so that this motion can be heard. I think the motion's self-explanatory really, but I think we all need to realise that we need to protect local democracy and national democracy, that's a given. And everyone who is eligible has the right to vote. And residents have reported regularly issues which have prevented them from exercising this right. This cannot continue. This motion asks council to facilitate the, sorry, to write to the Secretary of State for local government to request constitutional reform to facilitate the postal voting system and ensure all our residents, as well as people across the country, can exercise their right to vote, to scrap the system of voter ID nationally as it is hindering our democracy. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Is the motion seconded? Was that councillor party? Do you wish to speak now or reserve your right? Of the right, please, Madam McHugh. The motion is now open to debate by members. Do any members wish to ask a question, speak on the motion or move an amendment? Councillor Davies, do you wish to speak or move an amendment?
Speak, speak. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I very much support this amendment, motion rather. Just a reflection from the general election, I was outdoor knocking. It was actually for the by-election I was actually out for, but the general election had been called at that point. And resident on her doorstep, as you find them, and she'd resolved to not vote in the general election because she didn't have any ID. And, you know, she was wishing to participate and, you know, execute her democratic right. However, despite officers' efforts, and I'm sure our own, to highlight the certificates that are available from the council to participate in elections, you know, she wasn't aware of that and, you know, wasn't going to be voting. And that's a real deficit because, you know, she's still represented, she's still got a stake here in our community. And so, you know, any further barriers that we face to people executing their democratic right are really, really a detriment to society. That said, it has led to a rise in postal voting. And voter ID came in to mitigate some fears that we had around voter fraud. And the worst cases of voter fraud were through postal voting. And so that is an unfortunate outcome from implementing this policy that we've potentially exposed ourselves detrimentally to the element of the voting system that has less security than has in the past with face-to-face voting. But I fully support this motion and making sure that we can execute our democratic rights as we always have since the emancipation and the Great Reform Act.
Thank you. Councillor Ford?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I also very much support this motion. The last Conservative government that brought in this legislation, particularly for voter ID, ought to hang its head in shame about it because it has been an anti-democratic move. It's similar, in my view, to voter suppression in the USA. It was deliberately targeted at certain voters who vote more in person and who will be more, who will be much less likely to have the required forms of ID and will be much less confident about getting the offered, you know, very laudably offered through the council. I also want to pay tribute through having served as an election agent and nominating officer for my local party for many years. Pay tribute to the officers of our democratic services and to all of the council officers, our monitoring officer and our head of legal, who advise those officers and elected members at really effective briefings about the rules. And I know that they have done their utmost to enable people to vote and to be aware of this. And we have all, I'm sure, done our utmost. But it is time now to scrap that voter ID requirement for in-person voting. I did just want to note that in the motion, it resolves two things. To request, to ask the leaders to write to the minister to request constitutional reform. Yes, the second point is to scrap the system of voter ID nationally. But the first point, to facilitate the postal voting system and ensure all our residents, as well as people across the country, can exercise their right to vote. There's been a reference by my colleague councillor Davis to certain past cases of postal voter fraud. There's been some, you know, very, very serious cases of that in the past. But there has been more recently, I would say, some important constitutional legislation changes to tighten up the security around postal voting. And in my opinion, that has worked, worked well. And that there are certain things that have worked really in favour of democracy and in favour of our residents using their postal votes and being secure in the knowledge that they will be safe and their votes will be accepted. So I trust that the wording of that first bullet point is meant in the spirit in which I will take it and I will vote in favour of this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ross?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, the hours late, I don't wish to delay. I concur and endorse everything that councillor Ford eloquently just said. Looking to the future, it's vitally important, obviously with foreign actors coming in, our democracy is under threat. And any steps we can take to rectify the erosion of rights and votes is important. This was just another Tory measure to try and denigrate predominantly working people from having a vote, to disenfranchise them, to take away human rights. I'm glad we haven't got a Conservative councillor in this chamber, I really am.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Kennedy?
Just slightly repeat what I said before. And whether or without this voter ID, I really think yous have got a job on your hands now. And I really think yous need to hang your heads in shame. I don't see any point in debating this because you've got the numbers across there. It's going to go through anyway. So on that note, I'm going to bid yous all good night and hang your heads.
Councillor Francis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll start by saying, actually, I'm proud to see. I'll pause for a moment. I'll start by saying, and I was going to say this before that just happened, I promise. I'm proud to see my colleagues here prepared to put their principles above party political rivalries and vote in line with what they actually believe in tonight. Rather than toeing some kind of line or acting tribally. Voter ID is an unnecessary barrier that undermines democracy. And I believe there was only one conviction in twenty twenty one. So this legislation is clearly a sledgehammer to crack a nut. And as we've heard, it disproportionately affects certain groups of voters, including younger people. It creates barriers to participation in democracy where we should be seeking to actually make that easier rather than more difficult. And according to one poll in the twenty twenty four general election, four hundred thousand people were disenfranchised, disenfranchised by these rules, and that's four hundred thousand voices silenced. Voter ID is a solution in search of a problem. And as we've heard, it's actually creating more problems than it solves. I'll certainly be supporting this motion tonight to protect the democratic rights of our residents, some of whom I think might be rethinking their votes when they learn what's happened earlier this evening.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Jen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just to say I fully support this. I feel that the ID discriminates against those who don't have a driving licence and therefore probably don't have a car and they don't have a passport. So therefore it is really discriminatory. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also support this motion. And unlike some members in this chamber, I really appreciate the opportunity to vote with my conscience because I think it's the right thing to vote for and not because I've been told to vote for it.
Thank you. Councillor, anyone else? Councillor Barclay? Or yours?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council, this country recognises itself as the mother of democracy. The right to vote was hard-won and universal suffered, should not be taken for granted. All of us in this chamber are dependent on those who support us being able to exercise their right to vote for their preferred candidate in an honest and transparent democratic process. In this year's general election, the voter turnout was only sixty percent, the lowest since two thousand and one. The introduction of voter ID places yet a further barrier to citizens wanting to vote. Those most disadvantaged through voter ID are those severely disabled, the unemployed, those without qualification and first-time voters are all those least likely to hold photo ID. The country thrives when democracy thrives. Please support the motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Cawley, would you like to close the debate?
No, thank you, I'll just move to the vote, thank you.
Okay, right. Colleagues, can we move to the vote now? Are you for or against the motion?
For.
For, thank you, is that unanimous? Thank you. Right, colleagues, that concludes the business of council today. May I thank everyone, including those in the public gallery and those watching from home for their attendance this evening. Good night, colleagues.